Good evening and welcome to the March 16th, 2023 meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We'll start off by with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Sablon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America, to the republic, one nation, in the physical, liberty and justice.
Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with request to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write item one on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. Let's move on to general administration function, part one. Presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of this commission?
We have Robin Davis.
All right.
Before Ms. Davis begins, we also, she did provide some written comments that we did provide to the Planning Commission, I think by email, and if anyone needs a hard copy of that, we can provide that to you as well. Anyway, please take it away, Ms. Davis.
I'm Robin, and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I've been appealing to the West Sacramento City Council, to the West Sacramento Community Development Department, and to Sacramento Regional Sewer throughout the past two and a half years regarding a tiny home on wheels ordinance and how to make it affordable by creating options to impact fees based on square footage. We wanted the opportunity to enlighten this commission on all the great ways a tiny home on wheels ordinance can help our city, and so we included several documents in our written public comment, including a "How to Write a Tiny Home on Wheels Ordinance," written by an attorney, Jennifer Lavini, who helped Santa Cruz County pass their tiny home on wheels ordinance, which is also in the email to reference, so you could see a real-life example of a county who is now leading in this movement. We also included information from the Tiny Home Industry Association, led by Dan Fitzpatrick, who was a former city manager and policymaker. The main benefits of implementing a tiny home on wheels ordinance include: to more quickly increase housing density with existing infrastructure and without sprawl; this can be done with implementing THOs as ADUs, primary residences, and in cluster communities; this creates another path to homeownership for disadvantaged communities and creates a much-needed starter home option, since only 7% of what has been built in the entire United States in the past decade has been homes under 1,400 square feet. Homes have been getting bigger while families have been getting smaller; supply has not met demand or the changing demographics for some time. Tiny homes reduce carbon footprint by using less resources to build and to maintain. They use only 25% of the average traditional home's utility usage, produces 5,578 pounds less CO2 each year compared to the average home, and can lower the greenhouse effect by 36%. The state already recognizes THOs as habitable housing structures, and the state allows them to be counted towards our RENA numbers, so every reported THO can be counted towards your low-to-moderate housing needs allocation required by the state. The average cost to build an affordable housing unit in California is $350,000 of taxpayer money, on the low end, but the cost to the taxpayer by allowing tiny homes on wheels is zero, while creating a more efficient, affordable, and attainable low-to-moderate income housing inventory. Lastly, by implementing an innovative housing option like this puts West Sac at a higher chance of getting much-needed state funding by showing we are being creative with our solutions, which the state encourages. I still have high hopes that West Sacramento, a state-recognized pro-housing city, will implement this ordinance, not only so that I may come into compliance but allow others to have more diverse housing options, in addition to getting more people off the streets. I request this commission to help move this policy proposal forward by requesting a workshop or putting this on a future agenda. We also have a tiny home Facebook group for those interested in knowing more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Yes, thank you Chair Berliner. I just wanted to make sure that each commissioner received the two items of public comment that we received, and item number eight on your agenda, they did come in a little bit toward the latter part of this afternoon, so I hope you have a chance to at least skim those matters, since they are an important part of the record for public comment on that item. That concludes staff communications at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Number three is disclosure of ex parte communications. Does anyone have anything to disclose? All right, seeing none. Next up is the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the November 17th, 2022 commission meeting. Vice Chair Lockhart?
So moved.
Sorry, point of clarification, are we voting on the entire consent agenda right now, or just the minutes that you said?
You can consider the consent agenda as a package if you wish, or each item separately, or have comment on each item then still vote on the whole consent agenda as a package. It's up to you.
I have a question then. Was Yarborough, the development agreement, was that part of the consent agenda and then pulled because we had public comment?
No, that's on public hearing tonight, so we're not at that item yet.
Okay. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent? Okay. So do I have a motion to move on the consent agenda? Okay, Commissioner Lockhart, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Hirsch, seconds.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Aye.
Commissioner Escobal?
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Chair Berliner?
Aye.
Public hearings. A public hearing, oh, sorry, public hearing regarding a planned development permit for a beer garden and cafe at 1526 to 1538 Jefferson Boulevard, Mr. Lafferty? Oh, it's been pulled from the agenda.
Yeah, we kept it on the agenda because it was noticed, at least in the paper, so in the case anyone was here for that item, we have pulled that item from the agenda. It will return at a future meeting once it's ready. If there is anyone here who wished to speak on that particular item, now would be the time.
Does anyone here wish to speak on the beer cafe? Okay. We'll be moving on to item number eight, public hearing regarding proposed Yarborough Development Agreement. Mr. Tilly, Mr. Bruman?
Daniel will do initial presentation, and then we'll both be available for questions, and the applicant is also with us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
They do have a presentation this evening, so you can view it very soon. All right, good evening Chair and all the members of the Planning Commission. My name is Daniel Bruman, Senior Planner for the city, and I'm here tonight to present on the proposed Yarborough Development Agreement Amendment. Next slide. A brief project background. The Yarborough project is comprised of 711 acres of undeveloped land in the southwestern part of Southport. The residential village area would include 3,000 residential units, a village core with commercial and a mix of uses, as well as extensive open space, including a 55-acre interconnected lake park and canal system. The project was originally approved in 2008, which included an environmental impact report, or EIR, a general plan amendment, or GPA, rezoning, design guidelines, and a development agreement, or DA. The DA was set at that time to last for a period of 15 years, so it does expire later this year. Next slide. The development agreement establishes certain responsibilities that the city and the project applicant or developer must take to fully address the build-out. Some of the responsibilities include: developing an affordable housing agreement, providing residential community parks in that area, funding for infrastructure plans such as water, sewer drainage, levy improvements, land dedication for fire and police services, providing school facilities and working with the Washington Unified School District for that, transit system and traffic reduction plans, and waiver vesting fees. Note, the South River Road Bridge was included as an item in the DA, but what is now known as the McGowan Bridge has been constructed as, and is in operation, excuse me. Next slide. The purpose of the amendment would be to extend the term of the existing development agreement between ASB Southport to LLC and the City of West Sacramento for the Yarborough Project for one year. The amendment action does require city council review and approval. If approved by the city council, the extension will provide the developer and staff with the time to complete the fiscal analysis for the project, evaluate the certified ER or current CEQA standards, and complete the final map. Next slide. Ultimately, the recommendation this evening is to vote to approve Planning Commission Resolution 23-1 PC, recommending that the city council approve ordinance 23-4 regarding of opposed first amendment to the development agreement with Yarborough. This concludes my presentation this evening. David and I are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, well, actually, do we want to, commissioners, do you have any questions before I open it up for public comment? Vice Chair Lockhart?
I was wondering if the applicant has a presentation.
The applicant does not have a presentation.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Thanks Chair Berliner. I wasn't saying most of my questions until after public comment, but one question, Mr. Brunner, if you wouldn't mind, the Yarborough Master Plan Agreement and Development Agreement were made back in 2008 with the old general plan, so could you go into a little bit about how the extension would conform with the new current general plan?
Yeah, I can start off, and maybe David can fill in. So, since the agreement was made in 2008, I don't really incorporate any specific changes that would, you know, evolve with some of the future land uses through the general plan. So what we would be doing is making sure that our, this project is in conformance with the original general plan, and see if there's any consistency that we can get through the current general plan, but at that time, obviously, this is eight years prior to the adoption of the current general plan, we just didn't envision that to take place, but we're doing a consistency review at the moment.
I appreciate that, and the only reason I ask is because I thought I saw in the Planning Commission item that the commission needs to make some findings, and one of them being that it does conform with the current plan.
That is one of the required findings, you know, for all development agreements. In this matter, this really preserves the status quo. The land uses in Yarborough are incorporated into the 2016 general plan update, so there's no further general plan amendments, you know, needed, you know, for this project. We've carried it through under anticipation that it might have, may have been started sooner than what is proven to be the case, but we will ultimately have to reconcile the project, especially once we get to, you know, the tentative map phase, against current general plan, so that will be a bit of an exercise, so partially why we're looking for a little bit more time on this development agreement, to be able to do that thoroughly for the planning commission and then ultimately the city council action.
Thanks, Mr. Tilly. Just one more question, popped in my head as you were speaking too. On that point, and as was just presented, one of the original parts of the development agreement was assistance with completion of the South River Bridge, which was the McGowan Bridge that we opened almost 10 years ago now, so just wanting to know if we extend this, that doesn't interfere with any sort of part of the original development agreement?
Well, by extending it, what it does is it preserves those provisions that are in the development agreement, and we've already had some discussions with the applicant about redirecting that funding that otherwise would have gone to what we now know as the McGowan Bridge, to another endeavor such as the Enterprise Crossing. So there's, just because that bridge was built through other means, it doesn't mean that that particular provision in the development agreement just sort of gets waived, if you will. So we're hoping that we can redirect some of that to enterprise. That's going to be a big lift.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Before I open it up for public comment, I did want to ask about the recreational uses about this golf course, that'll be there, and I'm going to be very frank. California is in a housing crisis, and is installing a golf course really the best use of lands? Should we not be considering more housing, like putting in more housing? I'm not really sure how this conforms with the master plan that we have, but I can't imagine that a golf course in 2023 is how we should be using land in California, in a place where, you know, housing prices are going up and housing isn't being built fast enough to support our population. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk?
I should ask if, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Can it be, is that not part of public comment?
Well, I typically would let the, if you have questions for the applicant, it may be beneficial to do that now.
Do you have questions for the applicant?
I see that it's only extended by one year, I'm wondering is that these time?
We do have the provision of that via the city manager's discretion, there could be an additional year, so that would give us about a two-year extension, which would put the deadline, or the finishing time for the development agreement to, I believe, July 18th, 2025.
I'm going to open it up for public comment, but does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? Nope. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We have Don Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Don Johnson. I'm a resident of 3475 Burrows Avenue, which is in the center of the Yarborough project. It's part of the, not a part of the project, south of Burrows Road. I'm located on five acres, and adjoining me are four, three other homes, also on five acres, so we comprise a 20-acre area down there. I am not opposed to any continuation of the Yarborough project, I'd like to see the project move forward. I would like to bring to your attention, however, that the delay that's taken place, like 20 years, this has been talked about, or something, it's been planning and replanning, and doesn't seem to ever get launched. In the meantime, what's happened is, is that the area has been sort of abandoned by the city as far as any infrastructure improvements. If you drive down Burrows Road, it is absolutely unsafe. It is unsafe. It is a two-lane road, which has eroded to a one-lane road, was steep, ditches on either side, it has an exposed 12-inch high-pressure gas line crossing the canal, which is right off of the road, it's easy for a car to pitch and hit that. Additionally, since this thing's drug out, there are at least three or four homes that were mentioned in the thing that are either rentals or abandoned, they're in very poor repair, it's become kind of a blight on the area. Those that live there were trying to keep the place looking nice, but we have these other areas that are just degenerating as fast as possible, so I would implore you to try to make some movement on this, to kind of keep that from becoming just a junkyard down there, and also, you really do need to look at Burrows Road. If you're not going to do anything with that property, it's not going to be developed, that road needs to be taken care of. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I guess I can close the public hearing, because I can't, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'd like to bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anyone have any questions? Yes. Commissioner Hirsch?
Well, some thoughts, but actually a question that came to mind just now, to city staff. When does the current agreement expire? What are the consequences if we don't extend it tonight's meeting?
Well, the current agreement expires in July of this year, so, you know, a few more months down the road. This development agreement includes numerous benefits, if you will, depending on your point of view, to the city, so if the development agreement were to expire, those contractual obligations, you know, would no longer be in place. So we mutually agreed with the landowner that it would be in both parties' interests to extend this development agreement for a relatively short amount of time to complete the next steps on the project before it could ever start, you know, start happening out in the real world.
And if we extend the agreement, are there possibilities for the city to make any minor amendments? For example, you were mentioning before, the support that would have gone to the South River Bridge, might now go to the Enterprise Bridge, are there any other potential provisions that could happen if we do extend it tonight?
There are a few aspects of it, the South River Road Bridge, you know, being the most obvious one, things where, you know, life is, things have changed, you know, since then, so there are, I think there is some stuff that we might need to reconcile with more current practice, and, you know, that's the most obvious one. Another one in there was the enhanced transit system language, at that time, that was meant to go to buses, that's clearly not a path that anybody's going down anymore. So we are looking at, well, what other things could we do besides just trying to put money into buses when, you know, we all know fixed route buses are starting to become less of a thing, not more of a thing. So there are some things like that, that we do anticipate needing to reconcile, working with the landowner, but there's not time to do all that before July.
Thank you. So Chair Berliner, my comments with that answer, I agree with you that a golf course may have made a lot of sense back in 2006 and '07, before California was recognized as being in the drought that it's in, alone the current housing crisis, but there's a lot about this project I do like. I like that there are a lot of open spaces, I like that there is a commercial and mixed use component, a town center with shopping, so that this neighborhood can hopefully be walkable and not one that is entirely car-driven. I like that this has introspective investments for a future police station, a future fire station, a future school, but I do think that there are areas where this could be improved, such as, for example, a golf course not being the best fit for 2023, for 2024, and beyond. And I also saw that in the development agreement, this is up to 3,004 homes, and among those 3,004 homes, only about 25, up to 25%, can be medium or high density, and I don't know if that's the best balance either in 2023 and moving forward, you know, we're no longer, this development agreement was made back when George W. Bush was president, so we have had a lot of transformation in society since then, and I would love to see this project be more transit-oriented. I would love to see this project support homes of all sizes. I see that there are duplexes and multifamily housing, which is, my only concern is that this could be potentially 2,000-plus large, single-family McMansions on huge lots, which don't necessarily make the most sense in 2024, especially if this is a community where we need more support for affordable housing, for senior housing, for starter homes, and so I hope that the future planning commission and the future city council, if they do have the opportunity to make some tweaks to the development agreement, as city staffs indicated, will have some more support for those areas, especially, again, instead of enormous McMansions, starter homes, or homes that seniors can downsize in, or tiny homes on wheels, some sort of small home that can be a real balance for every aspect of West Sacramento. So that's my feedback, I'll wait, make a motion until everyone's had it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Commissioner Lockhart?
I actually have a question that came about during the conversation. Are there terms of the development agreement that the applicant has met during the span since this was first approved?
Yes, they have provided almost all the funding for the various master plan updates over the last several years, and they've also completed some of their mitigations, which are an appendix to the DA, such as their agland mitigation, and also their work through the Yolo Habitat Conservation Plan. So they have made some, you know, big strides toward moving things forward and holding up to their end of the bargain on the development agreement, it's just that many of the aspects of the development agreement are also kind of coming due now, that they have actually submitted a tentative map application, you know, to us, so many things in the development agreement are triggered by that, and one of the biggest ones is being the fiscal analysis of the project, which is something we're working on now.
Thank you. Commissioner Escobal?
Just another question that kind of triggered is, curious as to if there's a gauge of the full impact that this would have on the city and/or the applicant for this question?
We don't have the answer to that question yet. We are trying to make sure that revenues balance expenses, so that the city's general fund isn't negatively impacted by the project, and so that's something we're doing with actually all three of the big projects in Southport, but we're, it's early with Yarborough, so we don't have the answer to that yet.
Thank you, and I just asked that because I know I plan all of that right now, construct all rapidly, but express a little bit of...
Commissioner Sablon?
So I think Commissioner Hirsch covered a lot of what I was going to cover, but I do support the extension. I think it's important to preserve the benefits that the city negotiated when they approved the project. I do encourage the developer, though, to work with city staff and try to make changes to the project to come up to date with the changing landscape, it's, you know, it's been a long time since this was approved.
So I actually disagree with you. I think that it's been 15 years and not much has happened, and we're, it's in 2023, we're talking about low-density housing, I get some of it is going to be medium-to-high-density housing, but that's not walkable. Low-density, low-density housing is not that walkable. We need dense, transit-oriented development, and I will not be supporting this motion because I think that the applicant has had 15 years, and they need another extension, and I've been on this commission now for four years, and I've seen so many projects come before us, and so many extensions, and very little actually happening, and I think that we need to start taking, we need to start planning for more, we need, we need developers to come in and actually develop projects, and actually say, do what they say they're going to do, and more importantly, we need denser housing, we need more transit, we need more transit-oriented development, that's, that is, you know, that is how we are going to, that's how we're going to meet the population demands, that's how we're going to meet the housing demands, that's how we're going to meet our emissions reduction goals, transit-oriented development. We need to stop relying on single occupancy vehicles, and this project, even in, even in the photos, you know, with the shopping center, is, you know, cars just driving around a parking lot. Walkable, transit accessible. With that, on that very happy note, does anyone have a motion? Go ahead.
I do want to appreciate comments regarding the house development, for additional housing here, but I also want to recognize that maybe as Commissioner Hirsch said, a golf course may not be the best use of this space, but given where it's at, the collaboration with Habitat Conservation, I do want to appreciate that there is land that is going to be conserved... preservation, um, I, I do want to appreciate that there is, um, land that is going to be conserved in that. So, um, again, want to acknowledge your, your concerns around the need for continued housing, but recognizing that there is a collaboration with the county habitat conservation to, to preserve some of this, um, green space that we have.
Go ahead.
Um, to build on what Commissioner Escavell said, you know, uh, I, I've mentioned this at previous meetings, but there was a bird in that area that, that was rare and people came from all over to see this, um, rare bird. So again, while I appreciate the dense housing needs for our city, also recognizing, um, the environmental impacts of the land as it currently stands. Um, I, I also want to acknowledge the infrastructure needs for that part of the city as well. And, um, and encourage the applicant to, to look at ways to, uh, improve the, the infrastructure. As was noted in public comment, um, it, it can be quite scary driving down Burrows and Bevan Road. I have a low car and it bottomed out, um, both, on both of those roads, so I try not to use them. And, um, I think, I think those are important, um, things to note as, as if this project is to move forward.
So I feel like I should clarify that I'm not saying we build like a downtown Sacramento, um, in this project. Um, I, I think green space is amazing. Um, I'm a dog. We, we love green space. Um, but I think that having, you know, single-family homes that are low-density is not what the city needs. Um, I understand the need to protect, um, the birds and other, um, animals and with the Yolo County, um, Land Conservatory. So that's not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the land that we do plan on developing for housing should be higher density. We, we shouldn't, you know, it, it should be higher density. It, you know, you use that same plot of land, but just build either smaller houses or build up a little bit, not take every square inch of the 55.9 acre lot and make houses. I, I do want to, do want to clarify that.
Thanks, Chair Berliner. Um, I, I really appreciate this conversation. And Commissioner Escavell's point, um, brought a question to my mind, which is, of course, very important to preserve open space for natural habitat, as, as Vice Chair Lockhart mentioned, the birds there are wonderful. And so I was wondering, because we had such a short discussion, if city staff or the applicant could talk a little bit about the habitat preservation component of this development? I mostly saw just park space, so I admit I would love to learn more about what sort of habitat is being conserved.
Yeah, the, the lake system and the, along, and also along the main drain is absolutely giant garter snake habitat. The whole area has been, you know, foraging habitat for Swains and Hawk. So they have done some mitigation through the habitat, you know, conservation plan, you know, at county level, where, um, a lot of the county conservancy will actually acquire land and can either acquire land with habitat on or create habitats, you know, countywide. So, uh, you have to kind of consider that, you know, a, a big pic, a little bigger picture than just the project itself. Um, I think their fees toward that are, are well north of a million dollars, um, by the time it's done. So, uh, they have done some of that work upfront with the conservancy in conjunction with city staff. So, um, they are following the, the game plan that was aligned in their EIR, at least as it comes to biology. Um, because remember they have a conservation plan was not adopted at that time. So that's one positive thing that certainly has occurred since this project was approved is that the HDP, uh, countywide, has been adopted and implemented for the last, I don't know, about four years. I think it's been now maybe. So, um, there is a more systemic approach on that available to us rather than kind of ad hoc the way it used to be.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly, and I appreciate that. And, you know, while I haven't been on the commission for four years like Chair Berliner, I understand frustration that must come with seeing projects, going back for extension after extension. And I understand this one's been 15-year project, which is pretty long. But understandably, there have been some things that have happened in the last 15 years between the pandemic and other issues that can conceivably cause delays. I'm encouraged that the city and the developer can feel that just one additional year, possibly a second additional in a year, are enough to see the project through. And I also think if we don't approve this tonight, the alternative being the land continues to remain entirely undeveloped and uncared for and perhaps turning into blight is not a preferable. So I am supportive of the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. Um, any other comments?
If not, I'll move the staff's recommended action.
Um, moved by Commissioner Hirsch, seconded by Vice Chair Lockhart.
Commissioner Escavell?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Sublon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lockhart?
Aye.
Chair Berliner?
No.
Thank you, commissioners, for your consideration of this item. Um, the planet, the city council will take it, take up the final decision on it at an upcoming city council meeting.
Okay, moving on. Um, administration function, part two. Um, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Communications, do any of the commissioners have anything to? Anyone have anything to say? Commissioner Hirsch?
Thank you, Chair Berliner. I, I just want to take the moment, because this is the last time this planning commission is meeting uh, with its current membership, to thank the chair for all of her service and her leadership, especially as we began the year still doing this remotely over Zoom, which was not pleasant for anyone. And I think that you ably helped lead us into going back to in-person meetings where we could have more public participation. And I think that was really to the benefit of the city. So I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank Vice Chair Lockhart for her leadership. And I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving alongside all of you and with city staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. Um, I would like to echo Commissioner Hirsch's comments. Um, it's, it's been a pleasure, you guys, over the last two years, last four years. And, um, yeah, this, this has been really awesome and think, so I don't think people watching at home can see this, but we have two, four, six, eight, nine, oh, we have eight, um, we have eight people in the audience, which I think is probably one of the better attended planning commission meetings that I've been at in person. Um, I still think, and I'm going to reiterate this, I still think there is a need for, um, this to be, uh, telecast simultaneously on Zoom to provide people who are not able to join us in person or who cannot submit comments prior to, you know, to be able to have, to be able to participate in that way. And I think that, I, I honestly think that it is a shame that our city can't do that. Um, I think for future meetings, um, I understand that I will not be on the commission, but I think for future meetings, looking at the tiny homes ordinance is something that should be considered, um, for the future. Because, as I said, California needs more housing and any, anything we can do to get us there um, is something that we should try. Um, it is, it has been honestly, it's been an honor. It's been a pleasure serving with everyone. With that, I would like to adjourn. If no one has anything else to say? Oh, sorry. I can't see you guys.
I, I too want to thank, uh, my fellow commissioners. Uh, you all have such a wonderful background. Been able to provide really, really great advice and input. Have really appreciated the discussions. Uh, for me, someone that comes from an education background, this was a huge learning curve, but the staff made it, uh, has made all of this, um, much more digestible. And I appreciate all of you, the service.
Thank you, Commissioner Escavell. Uh, Vice Chair, um, Lockhart?
Again, also thank you so much. It's really been a privilege to serve the city that I love, that, um, I've raised my family in. I, uh, also want to thank city staff, uh, planning staff. You know, Mr. Tilly gave up a Saturday along with many members of, of, uh, planning staff to take young planners around, from around the Sacramento region through the Washington District and to show all the innovative projects that, uh, West Sacramento has and just that small footprint. And, uh, and so it was truly an honor to see our area's leadership in this, uh, space. I, um, also want to encourage, whenever possible, to provide, um, the future commission with materials as early as possible. I know it's, it's a challenge to do so, but, you know, receiving the packets on a Friday evening and then, you know, bothering you all on the weekends, um, and thank you for being responsive to that. I've been trying, I've always tried to be mindful of your personal, the time that I'm available to review these are not, is actually your free time. So, uh, you know, have, if the future commission has more time to digest this information, I think that would be helpful. Um, I also want to thank my family because I've missed, you know, right now I'm missing one of my son's events. So I'm, I'm grateful that I get to, to be present more for my family. So I want to thank them for their sacrifice. But I will continue to serve the city I love, uh, you know, starting in April for yoga at Brideway Lakes Park every Saturday morning at nine o'clock. So, um, come breathe with me. You don't have to do every pose, uh, but, uh, if you're there and breathing and enjoying community, that's yoga. So thank you.
Well, yeah, so it has been a pleasure serving with everyone. I was looking forward to continuing to serve with everyone and disappointed to hear that not everyone was reappointed in. I was looking forward to nominating Commissioner Lockhart to continue on the, the, um, role. But, um, thank you, and I will be at yoga at some point.
And I'd just like to thank all of you, especially for coming tonight, um, you know, for one last hurrah here. All of you have done really well on this commission and have always treated everybody, each other, staff, our applicants, the public, very well. And represented our city well here at the planning commission. Uh, and, and I know that doesn't, that doesn't go unnoticed, even if we don't have a lot of people in the room. So, uh, we will soldier on, um, but I, I certainly hope you will continue to contribute to this community one way or the other. And I also hope everyone will remain friends. And if you do happen to know or run into any of the incoming commissioners, feel free to give them any advice that you have that can help them serve the community as well as you have.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. With that, we will adjourn.